Good evening and welcome to the Kalih Valley Neighborhood Board number sixteen meeting. Today is Wednesday, June twelve, two thousand and twenty-four, and it is now seven o'clock P M. Rules of speaking, anyone wish to speak is asked to click the raise hand icon and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under two minutes, and those giving reports are encouraged to keep their reports under three minutes. Please ensure your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. Please state your first and last name for the record before moving into your comments or questions. Written testimony may be also, uh, may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. Please silence all electronic devices. Note, the board may take action on any agenda item as required by the State of, uh, State Sunshine Law, Haba'i Rais'd Statutes, Chapter ninety-two. Specific issues not listed on this agenda cannot be voted on unless properly added to the agenda. Materials can be found at our Kalih Valley Google Drive link. First on the agenda is, uh, City Monthly Report for Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening, everyone. My name is William Harris. I'm the acting captain at Station thirty-two. Um, this, uh, last month of May, uh, we had, uh, zero structure fires, zero wildland, two nuisance fires, zero cooking fires, and, uh, one activated alarm with no fire. We have seventy-two medical emergencies, including, uh, two motor vehicle crashes. Uh, safety tips uh, for the announcement, or a safety tip announcement for the month is power outages. We want to ensure that everyone is, uh, prepared for our outages in the, uh, event of natural disasters. Want everybody to have a two-week kit for disaster supplies. Want to use, uh, if you're using any appliances during power outages, they want to be careful not to, um, create any carbon monoxide poisoning uh, event. And if you have any questions, pardon me. Questions can be raised online with ready.gov slash power dash outages. And, uh, Honolulu Fire has submitted the, uh, neighborhood information to the board through email. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions from the board, uh, Mr. Franklin?
Uh, yes, there was a fire, uh, there was, I think, a fire hydrant was knocked off in Kalih about three days ago.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm having a hard time hearing.
A fire hydrant, we had a fire hydrant break off Kalih, like on Kalih Street. I ask that because I saw this big gusher of water in the air for like thirty minutes, uh, from my window. So, uh, did we have a, was that a water main break or a fire hydrant break?
Uh, yes, sir. This last, uh, month, there was a fire hydrant broken. It was, it was a runover, and the, uh, uh, port of water supply happened to be close, close by and shut that down.
One more question. I, I, uh, understand you submit a report. I checked my email. I didn't see any report from anyone in my email.
It's on the Google Drive.
Huh?
I think it's on the Google Drive. I don't know if it gets sent to each member, but I get it, and I put it on the Google Drive.
I don't know how to comment on something I didn't read, so, uh, that's why I, you know, I heard they were talking about it last meeting, about submitting reports, because everyone want to go home early, uh, but it's hard for me to read reports. The comment on the board report that we did not get before the board. Thank you.
Any more questions, uh, from the board, online and in person? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from the community, online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then? Up next is the Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening, everyone. This is Lieutenant Creighton Artico. I'm, uh, one of the nighttime commanders here at the Kalih Station. Um, I hope you guys had a good recess. Uh, we'll start with some stats. Uh, in the month of May, uh, there were two reported burglaries, uh, one motor vehicle theft, four, uh, simple thefts, two thefts from vehicles, uh, one robbery, two aggravated assaults, no sex assaults, and four simple assaults. Total costs for service were five hundred fifty-seven for your, uh, the two beats that, that you guys encompass. And, um, for the tip of the month, we're trying to, um, remind everyone that the Honolulu Police Department and those affiliated with us do not call people to tell them to turn themselves in or to submit some kind of payment because they're in trouble. Um, anytime, anyone gets any kind of call like that, because there's, there's been a number of those kind of calls reported. What happens is someone gets a call and they'll say, um, you missed jury duty or, uh, you failed to pay something and, um, you're gonna be arrested. So, the way to avoid that is you need to, um, submit a payment, and they'll, they'll have you go and get a gift card or something, and you gotta relay that, the gift card information via email or, or that sort of thing. Um, the Honolulu Police Department, we, we never ever call somebody on the phone to tell them that they're in trouble and that they can fix it. Um, if you have any doubts about the person, you try to get as much information as you can, and then you can call the police department directly to find out. Um, but at no time should anyone be trying to, um, pay, pay anything to s- some person over the phone, uh, because unfortunately, um, you're likely not gonna get that money back. So, anytime, anytime you guys have a suspicious phone call, um, please find out who they're, they say they're representing. Uh, let them know that you'll call them back and hang up. Um, you don't have to, you don't have to feel like, um, the police are not coming to your house to arrest you for, for missing jury duty or anything like that. Yeah, and you guys can always call the Kalih Station if you guys have any questions. Um, uh, any questions?
Any questions from the board, online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from community, online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you.
You guys have a wonderful evening.
Wonderful evening. Up next is the Honolulu Board of Water Supply, Iris Oda.
Hi, everyone. Yes, I'm online here. I have, uh, there was one main break in May near twenty-two thirty-three Loke Lani Street. That was on May twenty-eighth. I have announced one general announcement for June. It's our annual, annual water quality reports. So, we work hard to ensure that the water served to our customers is safe to drink, and each year, we conduct thousands of tests on the water sources and distribution system to ensure that the municipal water meets where it seats all federal and state safe drinking water standards. So, the results of these tests are shared with the customers in our annual water quality report, and this should be mailed to all customers by July first. So, some of you hopefully have received them already. And if not, we have July first, till July first. Uh, so digital copies and additional water quality information are available at boardofwatersupply.com, and you can also call eight oh eight seven four eight five zero four one for more information. Um, and if you have, if you don't mind, I do have from last month since I, we weren't meeting. Just wanna let you know there's the, another protect Oahu water information that's at boardofwatersupply.com slash protect Oahu water, and then you, that'll, you can see our latest operational actions in response to the Red Hill crisis. So, there's like weekly pumpage charts, drinking monitoring well results, uh, test results. Um, we've got some few days news and updates on that Red Hill water conservation chips, tips, and rebates, and about Oahu's water history. So, sorry, I had two, two announcements. So, that's all. There's any questions?
Any questions from the board, online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from the community, online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have, um, yup, up next we have residents and community concerns. Are there any residents and community concerns at this?
I got an issue, and I bring forth.
Yep, you can bring it up now.
So, take for the members that are not here, uh, I saw last meeting and I'm out of three-minute time limit, uh, for all presentations. All right, what I'm gonna read for the board members now, because I have a copy for you, we're putting it online. Mayor Board limit the length of each person or testimony offered in its meeting. The answer is yes. Boards are authorized to adopt rules regarding all testimony, including, amongst other things, rules setting limits on the amount of time that a member of the public, let me say that again, a member of the public may testify. For instance, the council could adopt rules limiting each person or testimony to three minutes per item. Boards are also not required to accept all testimony unrelated to items on, uh, items on the agenda for the meeting. Now, the second one I have is also, in this rule is from two thousand and twenty-one O P, the I, the O I P, uh, rules. And what they're saying is that a board has the right to set time limits of three minutes for the public. It does not say that three minutes apply to elected officials or their representatives. Cause when an elected representative, elected, uh, official or representative is trying to give us information that we ask them to, or the board asks them to, we shouldn't be ringing a three-minute bell to stop them from giving us the information that we require. All right, and I know that last meeting that a lot of people want to go home early, but when we asked people to vote for us to be on this board, we knew it was two and a half hours. And I'm not gonna shut my responsibility to the community by trying to make this an hour and a half or less. So, it's just ironic that if a public official who came to this meeting is speaking to us, we cut them off and cut their time limit off. That doesn't make any sense to me. So, I brought you the rules, and you also can read the rules in Rule Making, Chapter ninety-one, for setting times. And again, it does not relate to board members, public officials, or their representatives. So, again, uh, I'm saying this so that we can stop going down the wrong path of cutting off elected officials by ringing a three-minute bell so we can go home. And I'll say to my board members, when we ask people to vote for us, we told them we would do two and a half hours once a month. And if you don't have two and a half hours to dedicate to this board, maybe you should rethink your position on this board. And make sure you put that, and when you ask for rea- for reelection, think about that, give it time. I'm a hard no on showing this time that we only get once a month to present ourselves to representatives. Madam Chair, I go back.
Thank you. And are there, um, any other, uh, residents and community concerns at this time? Or comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you. Uh, and up next, we have the presentation for the bus service changes being implemented on August eighteen, two thousand and twenty-four, Department of Transportation.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Hi, good evening, Kalih Valley Neighborhood Board. My name is Jay Igusa. I'm with the Department of Transportation Services, and I'm here to share upcoming bus service modifications that will be effective on Sunday, August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, so first off, um, this rider alert basically shares, uh, changes to multiple, uh, bus routes. So, the first one up, I'm gonna discuss is Route nine, which travels between Kamaki and Pearl Harbor. That route will be discontinued. Uh, Route seven, and this is the one that affects Kalih Valley. This route is gonna be restructured. Uh, so I have a map down further, um, and I'll, I'll go through the map, um, after I go, I go through, I guess, this rider alert here, but, um, and also, there's gonna be a new Route three oh seven, which is gonna cover Camp Four Road portion of Route seven, and then, um, it is, it's gonna travel to Kalih Transit Center. So, uh, first, I'm just gonna discuss Route nine, um, and then just some alternative routes if anybody does use Route nine in Kalih Valley. So, there's not gonna be any service on Vulcanburg Street or Center Drive. That's, this area is kinda by the, one of those shopping center. Um, so Route C is an alternative. This route travels between Y-Night Coast, it goes on Dillingham Boulevard through downtown and to Alamoana. And, um, just so everybody knows, the, the areas, the, the things that are colored in green, those are the areas that Route nine, uh, served. So, the area in black is kinda just for information, and then the green is the actual alternative, uh, the, the overlapping segments. So, uh, to continue, Route one L that travels from Halava, Radford Drive, Kalih Downtown, Kahala, and Hawaii Kai. Routes two and two L that goes from Kalih to downtown Waikiki, Kapulani Community College, and Kahala. Route three, Salt Lake Downtown, Alamoana, Kamaki, to K C C. This is a new Route seven, which I'll cover in a bit. This is gonna travel from Kalih into downtown to Alamoana, through Kamaki, and ending at Kahala. Route thirteen goes from Leleha Downtown, Alamoana, Waikiki, to U H Manoa. Route twenty, which travels from Halava, goes through Nimitz Highway to the airport downtown and ending in Waikiki. And Routes forty, forty-two, and fifty-one, so these, uh, just kinda combine them. They all start in different areas on the west side of the island, but, um, generally, they, as they get closer towards town, uh, they kinda combine in Halava, and then it goes on Nimitz Highway, Dillingham Boulevard downtown, and ending at Alamoana. And lastly, Route fifty-two, which travels from Haleiva, goes through Mililani, Dillingham Boulevard downtown, and Alamoana. So, now I'll get into the new Route seven. And this is gonna travel between Kalih and Kahala. So, it's gonna travel from Kalih Valley. Actually, what, I'll go through the map right now. So, it's gonna start in Kalih Valley. I'll start on this end, the west side. It'll travel down Kalih Street. It'll go on Leke Leke Highway, and it'll come down, um, King Street for a little bit, and then down Mokawea Street. Uh, it's gonna travel east on Nimitz Highway. It's gonna travel into Eva Lay Road. When it hits downtown, it's gonna go on, um, Nimitz Highway, or Nimitz Highway and King Street on, on, on each direction, and it's gonna go through Queen Street onto Wy Manor Street, and then through Alamoana Center. So, that's, that's gonna be on Corner Street. It's gonna exit Alamoana Center and travel along Kapulani Boulevard all the way until it, um, changes into Wyla Avenue. It's gonna turn down Coco Head Avenue, and then Pohua Avenue, where it's gonna terminate on Hunakai Street. That's the road on the backside of Kahala Mall. And, um, in the west direction, it's gonna circle around Kahala Mall to turn around, and then it's gonna copy its route back towards Kalih Valley. And then just wanted to call out during the A M and P M peaks, there's gonna be a shuttle, uh, just to provide a little bit more service, um, that's shown in this dotted red line here. That's just gonna travel from Kalih Valley and then bring, uh, folks down into this Kalih Street, Mokawea Street area here. Um, this Kalih Street, it's only gonna have a one-way service, Mokabon, in the A M and P M peaks. I also wanted to point that out. Okay, and then I wanted to cover new Route three oh seven. Again, this is traveling from Camp Four Road, Kamaima Four Road on School Street, down Gulik Avenue, on King Street for a bit. This is, uh, Mokawea Street. This is where it's gonna kinda overlap with the new Route seven. So, anybody coming from Kamaima Four Road wanting to travel into town, they can transfer to the new Route seven on Mokawea Street. And the new Route three oh seven is gonna end at the Kalih Transit Center. Um, so that is the new routes. I mean, there, there's gonna be some other routes changing as well that's closer to the Kahala Mall side, that, that's all in town. I don't know, did, did you want me to quickly review those changes, even though it kinda doesn't, those don't really affect Kalih Valley at all?
Yes, um, none.
No, okay. Okay, so, um, this is Mark, our contact information here. This is my phone number. This is our email address. So, if, uh, anybody has questions, feel free to call or email us. Uh, but in the meantime, does anybody have any questions at this time?
Any questions from the board, online or in person?
I have a quick question.
Wait, this, um, Mr. Hasi?
Thank you, Jake, for the presentation. Uh, during the peak hours, how frequent i- is the shuttle gonna be going up and down Queen Street, and, and what times is that gonna, gonna run?
Sorry, uh, your question is what, uh, how often, and then what time, um, is it, what time what?
For the shuttle?
What time will it be operating?
Yeah.
For the shuttle.
Okay, so, so total, the shuttle combined with the regular Route seven, it's gonna be every fifteen minutes, one-five. Um, and hours of operation, it's gonna be from weekdays, four-thirty A M till eleven fifteen P M. Uh, Saturdays, Sundays, it's gonna run from five forty-five A M till eleven fifteen P M, and then, uh, state holidays, four forty-five A M till eleven fifteen P M.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and then, um, Mr. Kumalai has a question as well.
Uh, Jay, can you, uh, uh, review the Kamaima Four, uh, bus route? The thing starts at the top of Kamaima Four. Where does it terminate at the bottom? And will it, uh, retrace itself back up to, uh, Camp Four Road?
Yes, so it will start at the top of Kamaima Four Road, and then it will terminate on the Makai and at the Kalih Transit Center. And then, yes, sorry, I forgot to mention that on its way back up to Kamaima Four Road, it will retrace its, uh, its route.
Okay, thank you.
Yup, thank you for the question.
Any more questions, uh, from the board? Oh, Mr. Alhas has a question.
How big is gonna be the transit? Uh, the transit people? Is it gonna be like, um, because it's gonna be fifteen minutes, is it gonna be the same bus going back and forth? Like the size of the transit?
Oh.
They're gonna be a small transit or?
The shuttle.
The shuttle, the transit.
Shuttle transit, are they gonna be a regular size?
Is it a regular size?
Transit or smaller?
Or smaller? Due to how frequent it is, like fif- every fifteen minutes?
So, so the shuttle is, it's gonna, um, it's gonna be, if the fifteen minutes is combined with the regular, that new Route seven, so both of them put together, it's gonna be, um, every fifteen minutes.
Great, but how, how big is the shuttle? Is it, is it like a regular big bus?
Oh, it's a regular bus.
Is it a daily transport?
Regular bus.
Yes, it's a regular bus.
Any more questions from the board, online or in person? Any questions from the community, online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I'll put my contact information in the chat box for everyone's information. Thank you.
Thank you, and up next, we have city elected officials. Mayor Rick Langjardie's representative, Ban Master Clark Bright. Is he here or no?
Um, send the memo. Do you, do you wanna read it?
Yeah, I can read the memo. Um, I wasn't sure which memo it was.
I have it too. If you want me to read it.
Well, maybe you have it. Still, let's see.
Yeah, okay, I got it right here.
Okay, I can have it, I don't know.
Okay, so I'll, I'll go ahead and read the mayor's, um, the mayor's representative's report tonight. Um, there are some highlights from his monthly newsletter, and up, including an update on improvements to the city's critically important nine-one-one system. Uh, there's a list of resources for hurricane preparedness month, which begins in June. Uh, information about Hiko's Public Safety Power Shut-off Program, also beginning June first.
July first.
Oh, July first.
July first.
And, uh, city and county, and how, how they are supporting the Hawaii Food Day. Um, okay, moving on to concerns raised at last month's meeting. Um, there was concerns with speeding on Hala Drive and Makua Hine near Camp Shopping Center. From April twenty-third to May first, uh, H P D operates speed laser monitor along Hala Drive and Makua Hine Street. During the operations, there are no violations observed, but, uh, it would help the police to be notified immediately when you see a speeder, cause then they can go get out there and kinda, um, if they see him, they can track him down or just prevent, you know, him from coming back. A lot of times when people see the police, they don't speed, so, but at least they're out there preventing it, yeah. Um, so, yeah, keep letting us know if that concern, uh, stays around. Uh, parking concerns, uh, this was Kalih Valley District Park. I think this was you and Lynette, um, and just taking up so much parking. Uh, so we let them know, and they said that unfortunately, uh, H P D is unable to store its vehicles at another location at this time. Um, you know, I, it's tough, because I, I've been, I've been in the park myself and I've seen it too. Uh, maybe eventually we can get somebody to give them some space to park, I don't know, somewhere else or somewhere on the island, because it seems like they don't even use those patrol cars. Uh, commercial parking, there was a question requiring if there's any rules regarding commercial vehicles parking on city streets overnight. Commercial vehicle parking is covered in the revised ordinances of Honolulu. Um, and it, it copies this in here, and it's quite long, but, um, storage parking of commercial vehicles prohibited, no signs required, except as provided in subsection, subsection. It is unlawful for the driver, driver of any bus, truck, trailer, van, or other vehicle used for commercial purposes, whose weight is ten thousand pounds or more, and length from bumper to bumper is twenty feet or more, or any vehicle being rented as a car-sharing vehicle. Or any vehicle being rented as a car-sharing vehicle. Um is being paid to or is required to be paid to the state to park. The same or permit the same to be parked, stand, or remain motionless for a period in excess of four hours on any public street. Such vehicles shall be sub-subject to all parking limitations applicable unless otherwise provided by law. Uh so it seems that they're. They need to apply for a commercial permit to park longer than four hours. If it's, fits those requirements, like ten thousand pounds or twenty feet or more. Um. So I hope that helps answers, answer your question. Um. And then the last concern was a crest, a request for a traffic study on Hala Drive. Near Cam Shopping Center. DTS will be conducting an investigation. Uh requiring research, site inspections, and analysis of traffic history. The DTS will apprise the board of their findings when the investigation is completed. So it looks like they are performing that traffic study for you guys. Um and we'll see when they finish, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. And any questions? I can take them down and, you know, look to the.
You know, I don't even know, for the board, I mean, they submitted reports. This, I know we voted last, I wasn't here. Didn't we give the elected officials a timeline to submit the reports to us? I mean, because I don't want them to upload reports just before we get here, because I don't want them reading that report. So if we said that we want reports, did we mandate that the reports have to be in seventy-two hours before we meet? When are they required? And we're talking to city officials, are we telling city officials that they have to submit reports to us? Before we have our meeting? And if we are, and are we telling the city official? We, we are giving them a deadline to have our reports submitted to us. So we can read them, since the board voted in, we should also vote in telling them when they have to submit their report to us. Which I think is crazy, but the board voted in. I don't want to get to a board and read something. I'd like to do research on something. So if that's what the board said, then the board should also go back and have them submit their report seventy-two hours before our board. So that I can read them, research them, and look at the law. I yield back.
Thank you for bringing that up. Um and. Definitely do, see what we can do about that, because. Yeah, seventy-two hours.
Well, I need to read it. I mean, if you're gonna have one, I don't want to get them in. I want them to be able to read what they submit. So I have questions for them on their report. I don't want them to just show up and say, I submitted a report. Do you have any questions? I can't have questions because I haven't read. So if we mandating that they do that, then we should mandate a timeline.
And Mr. Kumalai, you had a.
Yeah, it's a comment, uh, uh, question for Spencer. Are the boards, uh, everyone timed schedule for reports submitting to the board?
No, um, not, not any boards I'm familiar with.
Okay, sure. But we can request.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think it's more of a, it's an ask. I don't think you can hold them accountable or. I don't know.
And it's crazy for us to vote on it. Why didn't we request reports and we can't mandate when we get them? We can't get reports just before we get here.
The thing of the question. Was that they were going to work on it and they would report back to the board? And.
Not last week.
Well, that's how we've been doing them in the past. But I understand the uh request, because. If they ask the questions, we cannot review the. The issue right into the meeting that we're going, we're not gonna be prepared to ask questions.
No, I don't want them to submit a report. It's ask a report, any questions? Uh how can I ask you a question if I don't have a report? Or you just gave me ten reports, guess what I'm submitting to the board? That's crazy. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Um are, are there any other questions? Um. That they would like to be taken down at this time? And you could always email me as well. Uh if not, we can move on to the next um. The next city elected official, Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam.
Aloha Chair, aloha board members. Uh this is Lynn Robinson for Councilmember Dos Santos Tam. Um I have a, can everyone hear me okay? Yes. Okay, I have a um. A, a brief report for you to take. Firstly, I want to congratulate um the board, specifically. Um Chair and Board Member Rojas. Um Board Member Kumalai and Representative Mizuno for collaborating in. Uh organizing a very successful community cleanup. Over at the bridge at Kalihii Street and Kilauna. Um we partnered with the Storm Auto Quality Division and the District Five Community Policing. Uh team collected thirty-six bags of rubbish and copious amounts of bulky items. Um I'm thrilled to say that um after the cleanup, that the Department of Facility Maintenance was able to get over there. And has cleared the area of all the other bulky items. Um and um. The community members um had sent me pictures of, um they went in and got the last of the smaller things and it's. Um as of this morning, it was completely cleared. I would ask anyone who sees any other items getting dumped over there, please. Reach out to me as soon as you can, so we can stay on top of this. Um I'm sure that Representative Mizuno will um talk more about her further collaborative efforts. To um partner with the state and city to um stay on top of it and hopefully um alleviate the community of the problems over there. Um I, and it's also my understanding that there will be future cleanups. So I'm sure I'm, that um Board Member Rojas will keep everyone informed and obviously our office is always ready. To collaborate for the, with those. Um I have a follow-up for Board, Board Member Koga, who had a request for an update on the sidewalk improvements for Kalihii Street. Um the Wahoo pedestrian plan is identified and recommends addressing the sidewalks along Kalihii Street between Monte Street and Nahalanahea. Um the, moving forward pending the availability of funds, the state, city's Complete Streets Program will explore opportunities to construct sidewalks. Along the portion of, that portion of Kalihii Street, either as a standalone improvement or as part of a periodic roadway and pavement rehabilitation pro. Um project, or through private development activities on this block. So um. That those improvements are coming. Um it's also um report, was reported to us that the Bernice Street. Speed bumps were, are to be installed some kind in this June. And lastly, if it hasn't been done already, the tree, the Tremet Kalii Uka. Um park that has been a, that huge tree that goes over the street and over the park and. Um hasn't been trimmed in years and years is finally going to get trimmed. I know that it's been um principal's concern over there for quite some time. In that it offers a lot of shade and cover for illegal activities that have gone on there for years. So let's hope that um that helps with that. I wanted to um. Circle back with Board Member Franklin and say that um I just sent a follow-up to DTS with our picture again. To remind them that we're still waiting on um. On a response for our request for that um inoperable school speed zone flashing sign, so. Um they will just keep poking at them and um I was just there the other day and took just another photo and. We're gonna keep trying. So with that, um I will, I will put the link to Councilmembers. Um newsletter in the chat along with my contact information and take any questions back that any of you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board, Mr. Franklin?
Hi Lynn, Lynn, uh oh no, school signs. I, I didn't know about Safe Routes to School when they're sitting on ten million dollars. Have we reached out to them uh and see if they can assist us with those signs because that's what they're for? Because uh we really need our uh, our crosswalks painted around our school and our safety signs up. And they call themselves Safe Routes to School, but, and they got ten million dollars. I don't want to know why they are not assisting with this or painting crosswalks. Or helping the kids get safely to school. So I want to know if we've reached out to them to see if that can happen. And I also want to know if Safe Routes to School is gonna join the three-one-one uh request center so we can help them out. If we see uh crosswalks and, and signs down in front still. But because the last month was the first time I ever heard of Safe uh Routes to School and that we're sitting on that much money.
Yes, um you bring up a good point. I, I'm only vaguely familiar with that program and I, I know that it has to do with kind of like a buddy system. For like making these, whatever they call like buddy trains to get to school, but. I can absolutely reach out and find out what those criteria are and what it covers and. If it's funding, if it's, if it's, you know, infrastructure improvements, whatever it is. Good point. I'll follow up.
Yeah, that's why they call themselves Safe Routes to School.
I, yeah, I, okay.
So. I, I have one more question. Anyway, we can talk to the director of Camp For. I've been going to Camp For for six months because Camp For is in our area. And Camp For should be represented by us. But at no time do we go into Camp For, represent Camp For, uh or even go on to Camp For, except they talk about how much crime comes out of Camp For. And I understand that Camp For has nothing to help their children because somehow we can't figure out who owns the rec center. Whether it's state, whether it's Hawaii, for ten years, we can't figure that out. But I would like to get the board or some representation for, into Camp For, to tell Camp For, you're in our area. We would like to make improvements. Aren't there any kids that like sitting one-on-one that might want to join the board? But it's so tough. I talked to their director, Julie Wiggins. About four months ago to see if Kalihii Neighborhood Board could simply get in their newsletter. She refused to submit her emails or whatever it is, but it is, it's out, it's just ridiculous. That this board has not reached out into Camp For. But did you, did, we give them uh flyers or banners? Because I have never seen anybody from Camp For here. Well, I tried to. I've been trying for six months. That's why I'm asking for the councilman's help. Maybe you can get to the director, we can talk to the management over there. And maybe once a, a year, Kalihii Neighborhood Board can have a meeting over there to let them know that we are part of Camp For. And we are here for you. But it is the toughest thing to give in the management at Camp For, to ask them to please let the residents know, we are here for them. It is tough because if you talk to people at the top, they don't respond back to you. So if the, if someone can talk to the director and see if he can come over here where he can bridge it. For this board to talk to people at Camp For, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, it sounds like you guys have been doing a lot of outreach, but if you think that it would be helpful for me to try to reach out to that. Um management and just let them know that um you'd really like to be able to invite them and bring them into your informational meetings. I, I can absolutely do that.
Yes, I think there's a lot of bright minds in Camp For. We just need to go find it.
Oh, we have a question from Mr. Rojas or coming?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw up something. Uh I've been trying to penetrate um and trying to form a neighborhood security watch um member or coordinator slash captain there. I, I found one person who eventually is very interested. He works at the private elementary school. But um again, it's like we need to reach out to the leaders who's, who will facilitate that area, which is, you guys can help us out with that.
So you, who did you reach out to?
Uh I reached out to uh, I don't want to say the name at this point, but he's a post program for Kalii, uh Highway Elementary School. And he don't want to step up because of the um crime, the situation there. Nobody wants to step up. They, they scared.
You're some really good community people, um, moving in ways up.
But the problem is they cannot get together. That's the problem.
I'll walk with you.
Well, they should come to the board. Yeah, they should come to the board. I think they should come to the board because that's what affected. It's like they trying to give all the power at the top.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get down to the bottom.
It might be a good idea to ask HPD too if they have like community policing or that, uh, because for the security one?
It's not, it's not for me. I'm trying to inform it back.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. But that's, that's correct what you said. We need to uh get the leaders who is, who's involved in that area. So that way we can all reach out together and, and we could incorporate them for reports every meeting.
Every meeting. But if they, they have a newsletter that for some reason we cannot get into. So, and Julie Wiggins, and I don't care, I'll say anybody's name, I can tell. Will not return the call and she's head of director over there.
That's a shame. I'll see what I can do about getting the Camp For, but the, um as far as the neighborhood security watch goes. Um you just need a few volunteers. Not everyone needs to be a key leader. And it's kind of, I believe, you know, from what I've seen and what I've participated in my own community, it's a bit of a build-it-and-they-will-come. Situation, so don't wait. And then as soon as you have a few volunteers, then you do reach out to the community policing team and I can absolutely. Facilitate that, you know, conversation and be a part of that with you, um board member. And then um they'll give all of the training and they'll continue to give that training and they'll continue to walk with the. You know, with the watch. So don't feel like you have to have. You know, twenty-five members of a neighborhood security watch. If there's many that started with three. And, and as they saw, other community members saw them making an impact and significantly walking and collaborating with HPD. Then more people and more people came.
I have a question on that security watch. I'm trying to figure out what we're gonna stop doing security watch like in nineteen eighty-two. Because. We have technology, we have AI, we have cameras, we have so much stuff that we can use. And my background is that for forty-five years, but we have to step our game up if we're gonna do security. Just putting on a shirt and walking around for two hours? And then you go home and walk every once a month? Uh if they would just give us technology or look at technology to help us out, then we can, we don't need all the HPD. We can use IA, we can use cameras, we can use a lot of things. They have the portable cameras that we can put in any area. And it records twenty-four hours a day. And it's just a little thing you roll out with a little blue light.
A question from Chris B. and Lamont.
That's my opinion on, on, on security watch.
That's definitely something that you can, you can circle back with the HPD about. I think that it respectfully, I think that those are kind of two different issues. So like professional security and security that would have technology and all of that. Um is, certainly can be effective, it put in the right hands and the right professionals. The spirit of a neighborhood security watch is community members just being aware and taking their neighborhoods back, so. Um it's kind of a little bit more community um building centered than it is um necessarily high-tech, you know. Um security. So, but either way, these are all conversations that I'm sure if you, you know, whoever wants to be part of that watch, that HPD will be happy to talk to you about.
Yeah, oh, so very important, one more thing.
Mr. Rojas.
Yes, yes, very.
Okay, you can let Mr. Rojas.
So very important is, again, it's uh like what Mr. Franklin said, we need to reach out to who is the leader in there. You know, it's, it's the only, that's, that's how we can start. And from there, then we can work together. That's our goal, is.
Start somewhere, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, you had one more question, Mr. Franklin?
And uh I don't know how to get to the city attorney for our criminal charges on Hiko on nineteen fifty Kalihii Street for false advertising. Because at that gas station, when you drive by, their sign does not reflect what the pump does. Is twenty percent different than the pump. And that's false advertising. So, and I know that they say, well, if you use their heli card, uh that's fine. You have to do like Aloha Gas. What the signs say is what the pumps say. And they have to put out additional sign that says with a heli card, it's twenty percent lower. But right now, there's false advertising and that's a crime. And they should be reporting. The sign, the, the, the sign should be the same as the pump. Not if you use my card, you can get this. That's against the law. They need to explain, change their signs to reflect the pump and put an extra sign out there saying with a heli card is twenty-six different. And that's a crime. So uh if somebody, you can reach out to the city attorney and report them.
Yeah, that wouldn't be the city attorney as much as it would be the Attorney General's office. Yeah, that wouldn't be the city attorney as much as it would be the attorney general's office, Consumer Protections.
Okay.
So if you if you want, if I'll reach out with to you tomorrow and maybe we can work together. Because there's a there's a pretty, there's a easy way to do that complaint like that. Yeah, I'll I'll help you with that for sure.
Okay, thank you. Now that's happy thing. Streets we've been calling today, they come down every Tuesday in the morning. They get off at twelve thirty, so the east side of the street, they gonna send a crew out to clean because he goes in between the cars. But now they come down every morning on the west side and the streets are clean. So I'd like to thank you for that.
Well, I'm glad we could work together and make that happen. Again, I, yeah, we always need all of you to be our eyes and ears out there and we'll do everything we can to make these improvements.
Thank you. And we do have one more question or comment from Chris Luweli Maga online. If you'd like to unmute. Chris, are you still there?
I can't hear you, Chris.
Yeah, are you still not on mute? Um.
Okay.
Okay, there we go. I see another Chris Luweli Maga online.
Yes, hello, sorry.
Hi.
Hello. Okay, um hello, everyone. Sorry, uh I came in late. I I'm not sure if this is the right time to bring up, but I just wanted to get an update either from Ms. Lynn Robinson or whoever's in charge of. Um getting the update for the intersection of Kalii and Kamanaiki Street. If you guys have an update of that, of what we're doing on safety protocols for that part. And then I I have another question after that as well.
Um I'm not. Wh- what were the requests? Can you remind me for for Kalii and Kamanaiki?
Yes, uh uh it 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 was either to install maybe stop signs there or a mirror there for the residents that are coming down Kamanaiki and then um going on to Kalii Street. Um and it's just kind of like a suicide uh jump from from there to there. So if there's, if there are a way that we can improve. Um I know a couple of months ago, I I I've I've requested if we could have like a mirror or something to help uh improve the safety of that intersection.
Okay, um.
Also, uh uh there's a bus stop there and a lot of, they're they're just dropping off people at that at that bus stop, which is dangerous. For people to get off on the main road, there's no safety place for people to get off going uh Malka on on the bus.
Yeah, sadly, the city kind of has a longstanding um policy that they don't do those mirrors. Let me double check. If you and I spoke before, I I'm sure I put in a a request for improvements. So um I'll I'll circle back with you about that, okay? So you're saying, you're saying coming off Kamanaiki. Going into Kalii Street is where.
It's Kamanaiki, Wailele.
Kamanaiki and Wailele Street, uh to Mr. Rojas.
Kamanaiki and then it goes Wailele and then it stop sign and then Kalii Street.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So what? Um kind of ruling out the mirror, what do you think would be the best improvement? What kind of specific?
I think I think we should have like a like a three way stop there.
At at Kalii, Kamanaiki and Wailele?
Um so I think Wailele already has a stop sign, but from both both two streets. Both ways, I mean, because we have all three stopping where we're completely like a four way intersection. That way, you know, no one's guessing to go or not.
Okay. Okay.
Yep, um so so.
I got one question. That's one request that I had. Another concern I had was from Ono, from Ono Market all the way to the back of Kalii Valley.
All are lined, all are lanes, the 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 driving lanes, crosswalks, they're all faded. Is there a way that we could improve? Painting of all those, repainting of all those lines for the safety of the kids crossing and the the community members that are that live in that area of Kalii Valley. Um and it's uh and also the the lines of the road, they're they're all faded.
What street specifically is that?
Um I mean, I I I'm not giving a specific street. I'm I'm giving uh giving landmarks. So from Ono Market, you know where Ono Market, Onos is at?
Okay.
Um and then from there, uh uh even from Onos all the way to the the pink store in Kalii Valley, all the sidewalks there are either half painted.
The crosswalks, you mean?
The crosswalks and even the 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 lanes that we drive on, they're all faded, they're all. It's 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 just to improve the safety of the crosswalk.
I can absolutely put in a a request to get those repainted with Department of Facility Maintenance and then not a problem.
Also, uh um also, without the drive, um is there a way that we could put in those uh pedestrian crosswalk? Um signs they have in the middle of the road like they have in Hawaii Kai and Midilani? Because a a lot of cars won't stop for pedestrians.
So we have to take those one at a time.
Okay.
And there has to be a uh a traffic study done. If it's in a thoroughfare, it's very, it's usually very unlikely that they would have that kind of sign, but it's not that it never happens. So do you, um can you, um do you mind emailing me? And you and I can flesh out all of these things and all of the specifics so that I can make sure that I put in accurate requests?
Yes, that that's fine.
Okay, so my email, I I'll put it in the chat. And um whoops, I put in council member and didn't put Dos Santos to him. But anyhow, Lynn Robinson and then um if you can. Yeah, if you can email me, then I'll have, yeah, we'll have a much better conversation and then I'll be able to track better and get all of these um requests. Put in and then be able to report back to you real time when I get the updates.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I really appreciated.
I appreciate your advocacy. Happy to help.
Thank you, board members. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Rojas had a suggestion?
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, there's no, there's no slowdown or speed bump. Um that could be a good suggestion as well. Next to that bus, before the bus, um Kalii Street and Wailele were, he wants to put in here.
Yeah.
So that would be a suggestion. Speed bump, uh you know, slow down, speed bump.
Right, speed bumps, okay.
There's, there are no speed bumps or stop signs anywhere on Kalii Street.
Yeah.
No.
It is like four lane freeway running to the middle of our town.
So the only speed bump that is uh kind of like temporary is when they're in repair that water break before a couple of bus stops.
Yeah.
To get to there. I think if you have some kind of speed bump before that, if we cannot put, we either gonna put a speed bump or maybe possible just do a mirror. Or two safety reasons.
Yeah. Well, we can, so the way that this process goes, I will absolutely explain the concerns and put in the request. The way that the process goes is it gets referred from the city managing director's office likely to the Department of Transportation Services. That then does a study and then looks for historic data. So it's kind of a double edged sword. I don't, you know, like if if there's a history of accidents over there, then. Or if they can, they do their speed study and they see that it's a problem, then they start look at, looking at solutions. And in my request, I will, I put um, I'll I put suggestions, right? So I'll put speed mitigation measures. The board is suggesting either a mirror or a speed bump. That's kind of, just so you understand the process.
Thank you, Lynn. Are there any more questions from the community online or in person or the board? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you. Aloha.
Aloha. Up next is state elected officials, Governor Josh Green's representative, Deputy Director Kristen Sakamoto, who's um. Who's also sent in uh her report. So should I read that as well? Senator. Kristen, okay, so yeah, she wasn't able to make it to this eve, this evening's meeting, but below um she uh she has a list of items that she was planning to report. Uh she does link to the governor's June newsletter. On June tenth, twenty twenty four, Governor Green approved an allotment of four point four million in general obligation bond funds. For roof replacements, interior renovations, utility replacements and other improvements and repairs at Kalii Valley homes. Follow up on question from the April meeting regarding whether the camera at the intersection of Like Like and and School Street. Is capturing data on vehicles that are violating the no right turn on red. According to the Department of Transportation, the red light safety camera systems are set only to record red light violations. Straight through the intersection. It is not capturing violations of right turns on red per the terms of the pilot. Are there any questions, comments that you'd like me to note down and I can email them to uh Kristen?
I have a great concern of the red light on red. I mean, I looked at their stats and their figures, they all are turned to facts. Uh I try not to speak on this, but I I would like somebody to come back to the board and explain why they have no right on red. Uh because that's a ridiculous sign and um I'm gonna use their own stats and figures. I thought I would get to do that today. To show them that the intersection was flowing perfectly fine before they put that sign up there. That one hundred and said, that one thousand seven hundred sixty day, that intersection worked perfectly. I mean, I'm sorry, one thousand seven hundred fifty nine day. We had one facility there and then they put that sign up and now for a year and a half, we have been debating that red light sign. And when somebody come here, I explain it to them in detail with their own figures and stats, that sign is useless. So I think it was a rushed judgment, somebody panicked, like every time somebody get killed and they made a managed by chaos decision and that what happened, so.
Oh, Mr. Rojas?
Yeah, I don't know how to talk about it. A new statement, a new statement, it says the purpose was to monitor the red light, but it's not monitoring the other red light. So it's not been doing perfect. It was supposed to be for safety for overall and also for traffic safety. Because the the two main thing that I I remember discussing this with the DOT, she said that it was a safety reason for. Uh the people and then also for the safety of the vehicle. The traffic, but it seems like it's only for. Monitoring the light, the red light. That's what it said in the statement.
Yeah.
So therefore, it just interrupted the the no, no, no right thing.
Yeah, well, I tell you all the time that I I didn't want to get into it, but we've been discussing this for a long time. I think their figures and stats are skewed. Uh I think they're wrong. I thought it was a rushed judgment and I would like somebody to come and explain their own stats to me so we can end this mess.
Thank you. Thank you. And are there any other uh questions from the board or community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. And we'll move on to Senator uh Donna Mercado Kim. Are they online or no, right?
I don't see them.
I think Senator Kim. They sent an attachment. I don't know. Is a representative for Donna Mercado Kim online right now? No representative right now, so we can move on to the next rep. So Representative May Mizuno. Okay.
Are they here?
Not seeing May.
You said there's no representation from you?
Uh no, I'm from um Senator Donna Mercado Kim online at this time.
She's a member of the board.
Yeah. Yeah, send it.
To the chair.
I think, I thought you were on the, and then May. Okay. Uh Representative May Mizuno is also not online at this time. And then we can move on to committee reports. So I did make a mistake last um meeting that I didn't nominate a chair, so I just wanted to ask now that um well, if anyone. Yeah, for the communications committee, if anyone has any nominations for who would like to be.
You should ask the board, maybe if they want to be on it, on it, that's the first question.
Any board members that would like to be the chair for the communications committee?
Online or in person?
Online or in person? Um. Number ten is online, um.
Are we limited to any committee?
Oh, sorry, was that?
Are we, are we limited to to any committee? Like more than, you know.
I proposed it, so I won't be. Because the reason we need a communication uh uh committee is because we do not get our word out. Nobody knows who we are. We are stagnated and we are in a standstill. And I believe that that is defined by our government officials and their elected representatives. These boards do not get out. Nobody knows. And for the last three years, we have three people or two people at these boards. Because if we don't get out, we have no banners, no budget, no, no nothing. This board needs a, just like a newsletter, just like every other people have. We need a newsletter. We put our newsletter that say all the good things we are doing on this board so people can read it. Right now, we just a band of twenty. And that's all we are. Because we are not doing an outreach to anyone to get board members. And like I said before, I think that's by design. I think that elected officials and their representatives have snuffed these boards. That think that's a small family get together group now. And if Kalii want, this board want to show all the people in Kalii because there are twenty two thousand people in our area, twenty two thousand. And every month for three years, we give two. There's no more than twenty people online. That's us, the representatives, and maybe two people coming from the community. So we need to branch out to get our word out on Facebook and everywhere else and let people know we are here and we are working really hard for them.
And nominate Randy Franklin.
I said, I I'll take it if nobody else takes it because you know what? You have to get to do the work. That's why I want to reach out to Cam Four.
Mr. Hussey? Yeah.
I have a question for Spencer Franklin. Do you know, I can, how many, you know, I can, how many uh people are on our mailing list, our physical mailing list?
Well, I think there's between twenty and thirty people on that list.
But we have twenty two thousand.
Twenty or thirty?
Yeah, for the physical. I don't know about the electronic. Does it, you can select to be physical male or electronic?
Can we get that list? Thirty people.
I'm on that list.
There's twenty two thousand people in our area and we have thirty. Well, that's shameful. We're not reaching out to anyone. And I said that I believe that's by design from government officials. They talk about these boards, but they snuff these boards. That's why we don't have banners and we don't have a budget and we have no accounts and we don't have anything, because they don't want us to have them.
And I think part of this is the problem of us not having a real budget.
Well, they took it.
Yeah, we don't have a budget, so we can't, we can't, we can't do a national.
You you can't do a national, you can't buy banners, you you can't do anything on your own.
I will help Randy Franklin.
So that that's what we need. And we also have to take, remember, we got all our elections coming up and and including our chair. So we should have a vote too. I would like to know who wants to be chair or anything else before we get there the night of voting. And then we're like, I nominate this person. Who wants to be it? I'll put it right now. I never want to be chair, so I'm out. But we should take everybody's opinion to see who on this board would like to do it. So I just don't show up next month and wait for somebody to nominate somebody. Tell me if you want to run this board, including our chair. Tell us if you still want to be chair. Tell us if you want to run it. We should take nominees for everything in the position because our board should not be by default. The best people should be in the board or the people that want to be in the board. We gotta stop acting like it's default. The chair is a powerful position. I mean, we should ask people if they want to be nominated.
Speaking of nominations, I heard Franklin nominated by um Alan. Is there a second?
There's a second, right? I thought we was getting nominees because we should do it next month because some people online might want to do it or some people not here. So we should wait.
So you want to wait?
We should wait for next month. We're taking nominees now.
Young form.
And then we should wait and see who else might want to do it. I have my hand full with the case for me. I'm always looking for points and doing that. Well, that's that's the reason why I asked if we can have more than. Well, that's that's the reason why I asked, we can have more than one or two nominees.
You can have as many committees as you want.
Yeah, we have a lot of committees.
It the the only number you guys gotta look out for is, you can't have more than quorum at the committee meeting.
No.
Or at least participating as a committee member. So you have five people, cause that it would be conflict of interest if you guys kinda make a decision outside the regular, this regular meeting. But you can have more than five, I mean, it's a public meeting, so anybody can go, but you just can't actively contribute to the decision making and all that, you just kinda gotta object.
Okay. And and I was hoping that somebody with technical skills would do it, because this committee is a big committee. You are writing newsletters, you are getting photos, you are putting us out there.
That's what I was gonna ask, if could you have a sister?
Yeah, if you doesn't have anybody joining in. Joining with me or a sister. Well, you you can have either one you want, you can do what you want.
You can also have uh.
You need a form, you need a form one. You need a co-chair.
Yeah.
Yes, you can have, they call it a co-chair.
Or even a sister.
And you can also be a resident, you don't have to be a board member to be on a committee. Okay, so I guess we'll hold off on the communications chair.
Yes, it's up to me.
Until July.
That's why I wanted to put the communication in the committee.
Oh, no, we have separate.
We can have a separate committee, we have a separate committee, but the. We don't need to put them all together. Like we have a board, but we're not together.
Yeah.
So. So we'll take nominations, for now, this is also a notice to board members who are not here. That you can also be a chair if you still want to. Sorry. Uh, well, we'll move on to the next committee reports uh, assignment, transportation.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Do you want to?
I don't have any report, but I I I do um, I will keep putting it on the agenda for next month maybe, since there's been quite a long time.
Okay, yeah, just send it over.
Yeah.
Thank you. And up next is the board business approval of regular meeting minutes for Wednesday, April ten, twenty twenty-four. So far, we had one edit just for the monthly. It says every um, motion to meet on the second Monday. It's been corrected by Mr. Kumalai to be changed to, it should be second Wednesday. Which we're, which is what we're already doing, so that's just that one correction, but any other? Um, okay, approval of regular meeting minutes, we have a motion? Okay, approved by Mr. Hussey a second. Mr. Rojas, second.
Can we add a community um, uh, community uh, person here that wants to speak out?
We're right in the middle of the approval, maybe just hold off.
We're gonna, yeah.
Do you wanna second the motion to approve?
Yeah.
Okay, Rojas.
Rojas seconds, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, um. And I guess uh, do we vote for the approval?
Oh, yeah, are there any objections to the minutes? Hearing none?
Seeing and hearing none, thank you. And um, next is a chair's report, so one of our members did inquire about holding a candidate forum discussion. So just wanted to see what our board feels about holding a candidate forum discussion um, in our next uh, in our next meeting of July.
Can I speak to that then?
Yes, Mr. Hussey.
So, I'm I'm not a secret, I'm running for the House of Representatives and um, and I apologize for all the signs everywhere in the valley. But I, me and and May were both invited by the Lulihah neighborhood board to to um, have a candidate forum. And I thought, well, if Lulihah's gonna do that, maybe we should go for a meeting in Valley as well. And granted, at the most thirty people are in the middle of it.
That's it. That's all, that's all we got.
People watch them online, you know, get comments of people watching it. Yeah, they're not on the mailing list. But yeah, you'd be surprised who watching our watch meeting.
People outside of other boards watch us too, so.
I, yeah, I watch them, they might watch the YouTube because they show that they logged in. And every time I'm at home, I'm looking at who's logged in and it says twenty-one, twenty-two, six, one more.
So do we um, do a vote or just, I guess, general who's?
Oh, what do you guys wanna do? Raise your hand if you wanna do a, uh, what do you call it?
Candidate forum discussion.
In July?
You know, there's some board in near like me and I like, ooh, there's a narrow, a couple narrow candidates, there's you know, I don't know what else is up here, but think about the other who wanna come talk about it.
What are the other suggestion about Lulihah?
Yeah, so I was talking to Leila about this and um, you know, there's a few different ways you can do it, cause there's the primary in general, right? Um, so you could do it later, you could do it now. Um, is the, is the district and the people running for like house, is it the same as the Lulihah? Would the list be the same?
Would be the same people, with the same candidates, yes.
Yeah, same candidates.
And so it would also include Claire, not Claire, Carol, excuse me, Carol Toffel.
Yeah.
Who lives on the Kapalama side and I think she might be on the other.
She is, she's Lulihah, yeah.
So like, we should invite her too, cause she's running here as well.
So a suggestion I had for Leila, cause they meet the, I'm their neighborhood assistant as well, so um, they meet the second Wednesday or second Monday, you get a second Wednesday. And I was telling Leila that there's some Milani boards who do a joint meeting for a candidate forum, cause they have the same candidates. So I mean, you gotta like, unless you wanted to maybe ask different questions or change it up, you might as well just go to the Lulihah meeting and then, you know, do like a joint meeting or just be with them and then see the candidates that way. Or maybe see how they do it and then change the questions or, you know, it's just, there's no sense in repeating it two days after. But if you wanna work together with them or if you wanna invite different uh, different races or uh, even next, or the primary, after the primary, whatever.
How many people do they have on their list?
Say twenty, thirty. But again, that's physical.
They'll allow them to have sixty.
That's that's the physical mail too, so yeah, I don't know how many are signed up for the electronic one. I imagine there's probably more than the physical one, cause we do kinda, we we check to make sure that people still wanna get the, yeah, for the physical. Cause it's possibly a dollar to send each piece of mail out.
Can we get a copy of that list? So we'll know if there's twenty or thirty?
Yeah, I can ask for this.
Like I said, I researched it, there's twenty-two thousand people in the neighborhood board sixteen.
Why don't we save money? You know, all politicians send out mailers. Why don't we just have one mailer that goes to everybody, that everyone puts something inside?
We're gonna find a community donation, but he can get our own message out. They got, they gonna claim they don't have money, they can't get it out, but if we can, we can get this board running and put it on YouTube or Facebook.
Yeah.
And then that's it. And the problem is, what do you do if you get like thirty thousand hits and they start doing commercial money? Who gets that money? Does it go to the board to do stuff with or does it go to the city? That's the question, but we need a YouTube presence, we need a Facebook presence. And we need a monthly uh, just like, just like every other representative, but they take pictures, like we can go take pictures of the sign we got done, the street shooting, we've been, the peening we get done, the homeless we got out, we got tons of pictures we can put on our newsletter to show what we have done this year. And then put it on the Facebook or send it out.
And 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 I think that's great. My point though is that we have no distribution.
We don't?
We have thirty people.
That's it?
Currently, if we were to make, if we made the world's best newsletter, thirty people would sit and half of them are here.
Oh, absolutely.
And and so, you know, the all the branches of government, all the politicians and elected officials, they all send out mail to everybody, right? May Mizuno has a, has a, has a um, ability to mail to everyone in the in the district.
Yeah.
So does Senator Kim, you know, so does House Member Rosantis Kim.
Absolutely.
Everyone can do it except for us.
Oh.
And my proposal is that we ask them to, to help us send out a mailer to everyone who wants to.
We do that, and then like I said, I'm gonna get all the residents of Camp Four. Of course, and the G's, I'll um, I'll find thousands of people in Camp Four and join our board.
Okay.
That that's what we need to do, everybody needs to do.
I'd love to see that.
Like I said, I believe that the government and and the people running these boards have shut us out.
Okay, so here's my first, my, I think the the first order of business for our committee is to ask each of our elected officials serving for the U Valley to donate space in their newsletter to help us get the word out about the U Valley.
The neighborhood board, yes, announcement or promotion.
Give us half a page each, or something like that.
Or we can have the NCO, who said to give us that budget?
Well, yeah, so um, our executive secretary is online if we wanna talk about that, but I just wanted to figure out, are we doing candidate forum in July, cause it's next month?
I nominate that we do it after, we doing it in July or we gonna do it after that?
You can do it whenever you want.
After July.
After July?
After, after July election.
Yeah, because we're doing our own stuff in July. We got a brand new board, we gotta do our elections, we gotta do everything in July. We're getting our brand new board up and running. So we should do it right after we get our board up and running, that we have candidate.
Okay, well, the election is August tenth, that's the end of the primary election. And so, I think our next new board, in our new board in August, what date?
Um, I put down, let's see, July ten, oh wait, August, right? Let me second.
Yeah, August fourteen.
August fourteen.
So that's not, oh, July, yeah, it has to be either July or July at all. And it's fine if it doesn't happen, just saying.
Can it be run outside of the meeting?
It's on the July agenda. You know, when I get the July agenda, I'm on the first Wednesday.
I was asking if it could be upheld outside of the meeting, like as a separate event.
Oh.
That's what I was wondering, like, if not on that July, uh, yeah, July meeting, maybe just
Well, I mean, like I said, you guys could just go to the Lulihah meeting and they're they're having it anyway. But um, you could do it as a committee meeting too, you just wouldn't have the Webex situation.
Oh, Webex, I see.
It'd be easier to do it, to, most boards do it for a regular meeting. So they have a short agenda and then they just go into the time, so.
Do we, we have a sense of what's on the agenda for July?
For us, for us?
Yeah.
Well, so, so, so we have a, it's a midterm um, just housekeeping, so we'll do the place, date, time, recess schedule, uh, chair, election of officers, and then establishing of committees and membership for committee.
Okay.
So there is a, a bit of thing, so I would say if we wanted to do a candidate forum, we we shouldn't have many, any presentations or really, we got a lot of business that day, so.
Definitely.
Um, but yeah, you know, you guys can, can definitely do it if you, if you wanted to.
I think it's still, I mean, a candidate forum isn't gonna go very long, ten, fifteen months for most. Almost Randy was.
I mean, if, yeah.
Alan, you wanna do it? I was just trying to get some collaboration. What are your feelings on doing the candidate?
Yeah, August will be too late.
Yeah, so July.
So July would be a time to do it. And, yeah, we gotta cut our formal part of the agenda short. Where we can accommodate kind of, and a candidate, like the type of draw up was uh, we have not only all rep.
No, Senator's not running. Yeah, Senator's not running. So maybe mayor and a seat council not running.
Right? Just mayor who might not.
Maybe the mayor wants to come hang out.
Is this not a full term for representatives to literally understand? Would this be a full term or?
All to be this. Nobody running.
So.
Yes, I I think there's one. Two, 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 yeah.
So.
Yeah, so, yeah.
If I wanna nominate it?
Yeah, if you wanna be candidate.
Okay, so July, okay, so if we're, we'd like to do a candidate forum discussion, would anyone like to volunteer to post uh, to kind of run or mediate the discussion or? You won't be here? Wait, can?
Sure.
Someone outside, oh, okay.
Um, just to organize the candidate forum, I mean, as long as communicate, I think that should be okay.
Oh, with someone outside of the board, oh.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that okay, Christine?
If you want to.
You might have debate forum.
Precipitor?
I mean.
She's just running the day, right?
Like the moderator.
Yeah, you just be a moderator, I think Spencer can handle the inviting. Yeah, he has already the list.
Yeah, so I think we should appoint somebody on the board to figure out, or if you wanna I mean, we should have just added this to the agenda, cause it turned into a long discussion, um, but we need to know how long each speaker gets. Two minutes is what Lulihah's doing and then they're doing an extra minute for questions. Does someone wanna develop questions to ask? Should we wait to see what Lulihah's questions are, to see, make them different?
How many candidates will come? Because only rep in in our district, right? Anyone's council person running and uh, yes.
I think Senator not running.
I think anybody running could come.
At the most, it's five people, you know, there's me, May Mizuno, Carol Toffel, Rick Langiari, two genies. The only other option is if like, if we were to include a federal offices, like the US Congress is up this year. You know, maybe, I don't know, Ed Hayes wants to come hang out for ten minutes.
You can ask him, he can mind his show. That's why you should do it together with two boards instead of just one.
Yeah.
And they might already have a moderator, cause they already got their setup.
Well, don't be concerned, if we go to Lulihah's board, there are people that know to uh, tune in to us on Wednesday. Might not tune in to Kalihai's board on Monday night, we're gonna have to announce that.
I think a candidate forum, I think they're usually gonna, you know, a lot of people will be in candidate forums, they'll show up.
I mean, that's not a concern, that's the only thing I think about. Everybody know that we meet on Wednesday, second Wednesday, and if we go there on Monday, we might do something about Kalihai. I I don't know, I saw it go into my mind right now.
You, I mean, you could also watch the, watch what happened on Monday on what, on YouTube. You could post it on Tuesday and then by the time Wednesday comes, you could be able to see it, so I understand what you're saying, cause you miss out on opportunity to ask questions, but.
I think we should tell Kalihai people, they're welcome to cancel their event any hours on this.
My, I'm just kidding. But our candidate is not the same, Lulihah uh, state rep is not the same one from Kalihai.
Yeah, the only overlap is in Kapalama area, Makai of, well, actually, not not, I guess, kinda like yeah, west of uh, Makana, we try. So that's the only area.
Rep district overlapped with the neighborhood board district.
That's right, yeah. And that's the part of the problem is, our neighborhood board stuff, that is all capacitized compared with the all the other districts, too bad. We got a lot in all these states.
So then we should, is it okay to assign or volunteer Christine?
Yeah.
Okay. So Christine, just to reconfirm, are you okay with being a mediator then, or? Yeah, okay. Well, um, so for candidate forum, do we vote them or?
Yes, is there a motion?
Yeah, is there, anyone have a motion or would like to?
Okay, well, hold on, why don't we add this to the agenda and then vote on it? To, cause I can't just put a motion under chairs or.
Okay.
Um, so is there a motion to add an item to the agenda regarding candidate forum in July? Okay. Let's see, move, Leila seconds. Uh, and then we'll do, we'll do a roll poll vote. Um, Ethan Dayton's not online, Randy Franklin?
Yes.
There's, you take the Hussey?
Yes.
Chester Koga, not with us, Alec Kumalai?
Uh, yes.
Simeon Rojas, Fernando Tan, he was online, but he's gone. Michael Gotti's not here, Chair Leila.
Yes.
Okay, woo, I'm. Okay, woo, I'm sorry, guys. One, two, three, four, five, we do have quorum, but we need two thirds to add an item to the agenda.
We'll just pick it up next time.
Um, yeah, so, so we can't officially add it and take action on it, but you can, you can still hold a candidate forum in July, it just has to be on the agenda when I get it.
I'll add it to the agenda.
First week.
I got you, guys. I'll add it to the agenda.
So, sounds good, um, yeah, and, and you know, you can kinda organize outside of the meeting, you just can't include, uh, you know, more than two, two board members talking about it, you can kinda just say, you know, a couple minutes for each candidate, um, if you, someone wants to develop, if you'd like to develop questions, then uh Christine, you could as a moderator, um.
I got a question too about our forum, because it seem like we got a lot of board members that don't wanna be on the board. Because we move tomorrow every time or before the meeting's over, they get off, are we tracking board members, cause they only vote in this two meetings? But we can start voting board members off and getting board members like Christine or someone else that wants to be on this board. So, if they lack hearted or they don't wanna deal or lackluster, then they should get off this board, we are a working board. And if they can't stay here for two and a half hours, they should get off of our board.
So, just to clarify, yes, it is three meetings.
Yes, and we are tracking them, because they're leaving before we finish, which means they're not wholeheartedly. We need to get members on this board that want to be on this board. So, if you don't wanna be on this board, then don't run for reelection, let the people that want to be on this board get on this board to be, to do something for the community. And that's what we should be taking up, getting remember, out, get these members, if they don't wanna be here.
Thank you, and um, after that, uh, just not chair's report, now we'll move on to announcements. So, next meeting will be Wednesday, July ten, twenty twenty-four at seven PM, uh, here at Kapalama Hall, room one fif, one five three. Broadcast meetings, Neighborhood Board meetings aired on Olelo Channel forty-nine on the fourth Saturday of the month at six PM and the first and third Sunday of the month at nine o'clock AM. And are there any more announcements from the board, online or in person or committee, or not committee, community? Seeing, any more announcements or? Sorry, announcement for, I'm sorry.
Was it like a resident concern? If you'd love to announce it at, right now, then I mean, you could.
Yeah.
So, just for the people online, uh, Resident Christine just said uh that there's a successful meetup on Saturday and that uh the community would like to do it once a month if possible. Yeah, thank you for um, thank you for doing that, and I did get a few pictures, if you have any more pictures, I'd love to, to share them and um, yeah, let us know next time that you guys do something like that, cause we'd love to come out and help and.
Go bring more people than said.
Bring some, some equipment and we'll do that. Yeah, I gotta, I gotta see it.
Thank you for that, any more announcements or Mister Hasi, do you have anything?
Um, not yet, we're gonna have to meetings actually.
Okay, well, I guess if that's it then, then um, wait, Jennifer, my, I think that should be everything, um, but, okay, if that's it for now, then our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.